Silence is commanded by the honorable commission. All those having business draw near.
Good morning. Happy New Year. Thank you. You may be seated. But let me uh let me be the pop of the bunch, all right? Uh chair, front row. You don't sit on the back row when you come. You constitutional officer, you sit on the front row. There you go. All right. The teacher in me coming out. Again, let me say uh good morning to you all and uh happy new year. We ask right now that all of you um please check your cell phones, all right? So that they don't go off because you heard the the bailiff says um silence is commanded. That means your cellphone. All right? If you don't, they'll confiscate it and then go into the bed and breakfast and it'd be a while before you get it back. Okay? And and uh we want to make sure that you are there. We are at the point now where in our inspiration and invocation and we have with us minister Smith, who uh Brandy Smith, all right, who was spiritual um oasis commanded in her in her formative years at Happy Home Missionary Baptist Church in Savannah, Georgia, uh under the guidance of Reverend Willie Gant- Gwen. All right, in in two thousand seven, she transferred her membership to Saint John Baptist Church and in two thousand eight, she responded to divine call to ministry. She was officially ordained as a minister on April the twenty third, twenty twenty three at Second Hallum Missionary Baptist Church. Minister Smith takes pride in her role as a nurturing mother of her daughter and as well as a graduate of Clayton State University. And so coming before us now to bring us our inspiration, all right? And then our invocation and when she gets to the invocation part at which is time to pray, I'm gonna ask you to re-stan. And then following uh that and then uh Commissioner Noah will come and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Uh Minister Smith, the podium is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. To each and everyone in their respective places, I greet you this morning. Philippians the third chapter verse thirteen says, "Brother, and I do not count myself to apprehend, but one thing I do, forgetting those things which are behind me and reaching forward to those things which are ahead." There is something about each and every new year that brings about the feeling of hope and possibility. The thought of achieving new goals and aspirations should ignite a desire to declutter and create space not only physically but mentally and spiritually as well. As on January first, I'm sure that we all purpose in our hearts and in our minds that there was something that we needed to get rid of or that we did not want to carry with us throughout the new year. So as we began to approach this new year, I challenge each of you to to be transparent and to ask yourself and do a self-examination and determine if there's anything that you're holding on to that will prevent you from moving forward into the new year. There are so many things that we have endured in the past years and we know we certainly do not want to take those things with us. But one thing I know for sure is that we cannot take them with us into the new year. There are great things that are in store for each and every one of us, but in order for us to move forward, that means that we would have to leave those things behind. We cannot carry any old regrets, any disagreements, any unforgiveness or anything that will hold us bondage from moving forward and receiving the greater gain that we have in front of us. So what does that say to us as we explore Philippians three and thirteen? That says that anything that is holding on, that I'm holding on to, I have to let it go. I have to forget it. I may not have all the answers. I may not understand the process of why things are happening the way that it is, but one thing I will not do is hold on to it. I will forget it. I will leave it in the past and I will move forward because greater is expected and we expect greater. So as I prepare to go into prayer, I just ask that you, as I said, encourage each and every one of you to just release those things that may be of bondage to you because as we continue to move forward, we cannot take those things with us. As we continue to go into the new year, I urge you to trust in the Lord and lean not to your own understanding. I encourage you to leave the past just where it is and focus your attention on the future. Thank you.
You understand?
Heavenly Father, we come before you first and foremost to tell you thank you. We thank you that you've brought us to a new year. We thank you for your grace and your mercy in keeping us covered. And as we embark into this new year, oh God, we ask right now that you discover us. Touch each and every member that is assembled here today, oh God. Give them the grace and the mercy and the understanding and the clarity to lead this county in the direction that you would have it to go. We thank you for We thank you for their sacrifice, we thank you for their devotion, and we thank you for just taking care of us, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Commissioner Noah?
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. To Minister Smith, we thank you for coming and for bringing us those words of encouragement and inspiration. And I also want to know, um, to let us know that, um, let us stay in prayer for those in California in the fire, alright? I have reached out to the three commissioners that I know from California who are directly in, because it's in their district or in their zone, as they say, and, uh, to let them know that we're praying for them. And we just thank you for bringing your words of encouragement for us to keep on pressing toward tomorrow. Thank you, God bless you. Roll call?
Chester A. Ellis, Chairman.
Present.
Anthony Wayne Noah, District One. Melinda Scott Hodge, District Two.
Present.
Bobby Lockett, District Three.
Present.
Patrick K. Farrell, District Four. Tanya Milton, District Five.
Present.
Erin Whiteley, District Six.
Here.
Dean K. Glider, District Seven.
Here.
Marsha Buford, District Eight.
Here.
Alright, thank you, and, uh, as we begin this first meeting of, uh, twenty-twenty-five, uh, for those who may not know, um, uh, Commissioner Noah is new, brand new, and Commissioner Buford is new. And so as they answer the role for their very first time, amen? And so we want to know and make sure, at this time, I'm going to call on Commissioner, um, Middleton, who will introduce our youth commissioners to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I'm excited to introduce to you our two youth commissioners who are in attendance today. We have Ms. Chris Hudson, who's a sophomore at Allen's High School, and Chris plays the piano and she's interested in visual arts. And she's a tenth grader at Allen's High School. And we have Ms. Melon Jackson, who's a Woodville Tompkins student, who's near and dear to Chairman's heart. Pathway to health is her subject and also early childhood, she's also a tenth grader. So we welcome you today and we ask that you get involved, listen to what's going on, and if you have questions, please ask. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you for, and, thank you for joining us today. Feel free to take part in anything we say or do. If you have any questions or you want to make any statements, alright? Um, all you have to do is, is, um, get our attention, and if I'm not paying attention sometimes, the rest of them will be paying attention, will call my attention to you, huh? And, uh, I'm glad to see, let you know now, I'm, I don't know if I'm the first, but I'm gonna be this one today. You're Wolverine for life. Right, and we got you, I'm in front of you and I got some Wolverines behind you, some, saying, we the big guys, alright? Will you cover? Having fun with it. At this time, we will move on to proclamation and special presentation, and I will call to our front, Ju-, uh, Ms. Julie Wade, the executive director, Therese Place, as we present them with this declaration. Right, I mean, it's proclamation, I'm sorry. Declaring January twenty-twenty-five as human trafficking awareness, alright? And prevention month in Chatham County. The County of Chatham, Georgia proclamation. Whereas human trafficking is a horrendic crime and a violation of human rights that affects individuals in every community, including our own. And whereas an estimated twenty-four point nine million people are victims of human trafficking globally, including men, women, and children who are exposed, uh, for labor, sex, and other forms of this misconduct. Whereas January is nationally recognized as human traffic awareness and prevention month, a time to raise awareness about this crime and to take action to prevent it in all forms. Whereas Chatham County is committed to fostering a safe and supportive environment for all individuals advocating for the protection of those at risk and promoting initiatives that address the root cause of trafficking. Now therefore, I, Chester Ellis, Chairman, on behalf of the Chatham County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim January as Trafficker, Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month in Chatham County, and urge all citizens to engage in activities that raise awareness and support efforts to end human trafficking. And witness whereof, I are here to set my hands and call the seal of Chatham County, Georgia to be affixed this tenth day of January twenty-twenty-five. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman Ellis and County Commissioners, um, we're grateful for your support. This is our third year coming before you, um, and just like, uh, this group has grown, Theros Place has gone, grown. We love to see our founding board chair, Marsha Buford, now sitting amongst you as a colleague, although we miss her down here. Um, Chatham, uh, Theros Place opened our doors in December twenty-twenty-three, and since then, we have thir-, served thirteen young people. Our team has grown to a staff of over twenty people, um, and supporting these young people literally twenty-four seven, Christmas, New Years, every minute of every day, we have staff there working with these young people. We're grateful for the county's support. Um, y'all have been financial supporters of ours for the past two years, and like I said, supporters of ours, just in our effort since the beginning. We have a big group here, I'd like to have everyone introduce themselves briefly, um, but just thank you for your support. And if you'd ever like to come visit Theros Place, either to look at the facility or have dinner with our youth, we would love that opportunity. We're trying to expose them to as much about our community and leadership, um, and values as we can. And with that, I'll hand it over.
Very briefly, I'm Judge Tom Cole from Juvenile Court, and I have with me from the court Laura Weatherly, who is the coordinator for Chatham County's Human Treatment, Human Trafficking Treatment Court, and then our court administrator Teresa Owens. But on behalf of Judge Roxanne Formy, who presides over that court, and Judge Lindretta Grindel Kramer, and, um, Judge Laura Singleton, um, we want to thank you from the court for your support because Chatham County has its own treatment court for the victims of human trafficking. And, um, it's an amazing program and it's special, we coordinate with Theros Place, of course, as well, but just want to say thank you to the commission on behalf of the Juvenile Court for supporting our work in this area.
I'll just, I have Elizabeth Summerall is here from our board. Um, Gabriella Marvaldi is our development and volunteer coordinator. Kate Templeton is our outreach coordinator, she does, um, outreach training throughout the community. So if you ever have any group that needs training on human trafficking, she's our contact. And then Jada Washington is our Americor Vista, um, and she joined us this fall and has been a great addition. So our team is growing, our work is growing, our support is growing, and we're really grateful for the county's support.
Well, we thank you for partnering with us and we thank you for the work that you do. What I'm gonna ask now, Commissioner Buford, if you will come down.
She's gossiping with, uh,
I'm a director.
Ms. K. Glider.
And I'm gonna ask you to hold the proclamation up and to the fellow standing behind you, alright? If all of you will gather on this side behind her, alright? And let them, they're gonna face the camera and then, yeah, there you go. Alright, Will, you got it from here, you can direct them.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Alright, and just before you leave.
Congratulations again.
Yeah.
Appreciate you.
Commissioner Whiteley wants to say a few words.
So, good morning, and good to see you. Uh, also good to see my, my good friend, Elizabeth Summerall. She's a great golfer, too, let's shut up. We won a, we won the Frank Allen Boys and Girls Championship a few years back, but I take, I digress. I wanted to, uh, just take a moment to thank you all for the work that you're, you're doing. Um, Judge Cole, um, Judge Formy and, um, being, thinking outside of the box when it comes to this. Um, I think, and I want to say this to my colleagues, with how human trafficking is affecting Chatham County, I think in a lot of ways, it's understated. Um, as the father of teenage daughters, it's scary. Um, and I, I want us to continue to support, you know, the courts, um, and the programming, but I also think that we should look into, um, some ways that we can try to fill or plug some of the gaps that the programming has. I understand that not all, every system has gaps, right? And this is a system, um, that really affects not only our community's overall well-being, if we want to go to quote the blueprint, uh, it also affects our community's education, health, um, and our future. And to see young men, men and women, um, falling victim to this and the scars, uh, and the unseen trauma that it creates, it really deals a tremendous blow to our community overall. And so I just want to share to y'all as my colleagues to say, um, I hope that we can look into some other ways that we could try to plug gaps. I'm not sure what that is. Um, I know I have had the opportunity to speak with some of the stakeholders who work in this portion of our community's social safety net. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to moving, um, the needle on that even more because what you guys do is so meaningful. And again, it's easy to watch movies like Taken or something like that and think that it's, oh, that's in Europe. Uh, but we are on the I-ninety-five corridor, and if you just Google that, that data, um, it's, it's very terrifying in a lot of ways. So thank you for what you're doing, and I look forward to trying to help move the needle, hopefully along with my colleagues, to plug some of those gaps for the sake of our community's overall health. And thank you.
Alright, Commissioner Milton?
Um, well, Chris and Melon, do you have any questions about what was just presented?
Hello. So would you say human trafficking also affects the non-victims, such as the people that know the actual victims? Do you think, like, the side effects can carry over to people who aren't actual victims?
Yeah, that's the question for.
Yeah, I think so, I think secondary trauma from family and friends that have experienced trauma is very real. And I, particularly for young people, I think you might associate some sort of guilt or responsibility even, or you don't know what to do and you want to help a friend. Um, so in that situation, I think you should go speak to a school counselor or your parent. But definitely, secondary trauma, as we learn more and more about trauma, we're realizing the ripple effect of it. Uh, and that person that's your close friend may all of a sudden kind of shut down or not want to be your friend anymore. So, um, yeah, I think, um, you know, having those group conversations and really getting some guidance on how to support that person is, is really important. Also, y'all should join our teen council.
Because that they're looking for, I guess. I mean, I guess they get the guys, too, huh?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times, it's young people in particularly vulnerable situations who are highly susceptible to manipulation and abuse, who may be seeking something other than, uh, their home environment, which may not be stable. But certainly with the internet, um, everyone is, is vulnerable and needs to be aware of it. And Kate's team does tons of education in the schools, um, to parents, teachers, and students. Obviously, those are kind of different presentations for each to really educate them about that.
Anybody else?
Good question.
Anyone else? And, and let me say now, one of the things that, when she was asking the question, one of the things that came to my mind was that we have with the, um, C and T, we have that, um, trailer that we take around to educate, and we also have the mentoring part of that. What do they call it, the P P something? Uh, P P I? Okay. And, and we might even need to connect
Yeah.
that program with your program because he's going from school to school and he's recruiting students out of the schools to be peer mentors, alright? And that might be something that we can connect them with so that the youth commission and, and others can find out how that go, and we can add the trafficking part to that, alright?
Yes, we would.
Just like we do the judge. So, um, Mr. Manager, if you will, have, um, talk to Director Serhead and those and connect them with them, alright? So that we can look at this thing holistically.
Thank you. That, that's great, we appreciate it.
Alrighty, thank you all for what you do.
Have a good meeting, good luck, Commissioner Buford.
Is.
Mr. Chairman, uh, on the, uh, the next item, we're gonna need to push that to the next meeting.
No, here's what we're gonna do, no, we're not pushing it to the next meeting, uh, um, Tara, come here. Alright, you got it over there, right? Alright, present it to Tara, Tara, and then you can present it to Ms. Roberts, alright? That we have, that, that we recognizing her for her years of service with us, okay? Um, so that we can, we can get these things off because the more we push back, the more we get stuck with a whole lot of things, and y'all know. Um, you, my directions from the board is to keep it short and sweeping to the point, alright? So, um, just let Ms. Roberts know that we recognize her today and, and we thank her for the job that she do, and that's her, um, certificate, okay?
Yes, sir.
Alright, now you want Will to, okay, alright, he told me cut it. Alright, let us go on now to, uh, do we have someone from Savannah Tech here? Come on, come up front, Dennis, if you will. This is in recognition, uh, of Savannah Tech and the central role it played with us in the recovery of the storms Debbie and Helene, alright? And, and, uh, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Savannah Tech in recognition of their role they played, and it's presented this tenth day of January twenty-twenty-five. The floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the commission. I really appreciate the opportunity to recognize Savannah Technical College uh, for their support of the emergency management program, as well as the Federal Emergency Management Agency in opening up a disaster recovery center for Chatham County and in some cases, the region. Uh, you know, natural disasters occur all the time. We're seeing two very significant natural disasters occurring right now with the wildfires over on the west coast and also the winter storm that's affecting the east coast right now. So it's very, very prevalent, and the investment that the commission has made into your emergency management program just pales in comparison to the benefit that we are actually getting from mutual aid agreements, from contracts, from right-of-entry agreements, and also very strong partnerships, such as the one with Savannah Tech. So I would like to introduce you to Dr. Ryan Foley, he is the president of Savannah Tech. And as I mentioned, uh, following Debbie and Helene, they opened up their, uh, one of their facilities for a disaster recovery center for all of Chatham County. And this wasn't the first time they did that. After Matthew and Irma, they also opened up a disaster recovery center for us. So they stayed open for about sixty days, and, uh, again, they supported the emergency management program, supported Chatham County, and, uh, really opened up their facility without any other ask, uh, for anything from, from us other than the emergency management support. So I'd like to introduce you again to Dr. Ryan Foley.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Uh, certainly very excited to be here today and, and, uh, to celebrate the fact that we could help, you know? Uh, when I got a call from Jackie to say if we could, I said, no, it's how we can. And I really wanted to introduce, uh, Katie Twining, who is our Assistant Vice President for Operations. She really is the person that interacted and was liaison with SEMA, GMA, FEMA, and everybody in between there to really make it work and make it, make it happen. We're so just very thankful to be a partner in the community and we're able, uh, to serve. So thank you for all your work, Katie, as well, and thank you.
And listen, we thank you all for, for helping us out without any questions, um, um, you know, when it comes out that it's not if we can help, what can we do? And, and, and to place all the things that we needed at that particular point in both of these instances in place. Uh, we just thank you for being a partner with us and working with us wholeheartedly as you all did. Any question or comments from any commissioner? Alright, again, let's thank you all, and we appreciate you, alright? Because we know there's gonna be another time. It's just a matter of when.
Yeah, that's right.
Alright? Alright, let me, let me take this time now, um, let me introduce, um, Sheriff Coleman, Ricky Coleman, alright? If you come to the mic. Just want to make sure that all of the commissioners meet you and know you, alright? And, and, uh, we're so grateful to be working with you and, and, and getting the job done here. And any comments you want to make, uh, be open to it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission Board, thank you for having me. Uh, my name is Richard Coleman, I'm your newly elected sheriff of Chatham County. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I look forward to a long, productive, unified relationship as we continue forward down that path that we call, or Mr. Chair would like to say, One Chatham. God bless you all, I look forward to talking to each and every one of you soon, thank you, sir.
Thank you, any comments from any commissioner?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, we look forward to the job.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. Lock, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you so very much. All right, we don't have any chairman's items or commissioner items. We have no table items, we go to items for individual action. To request bold approval of the following budget amendments and transfer, one in the multi-grant fund, A, increase revenue and expenditures four hundred and forty-eight dollars for supplemental funding for, of the Georgia Historic Preservation Survey, increase revenue and expenditures four thousand, forty thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars for supplemental funding for the Criminal Justice Coordination Council Committee Data Performance Platform Grant. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the budget amendments and transfers as stated.
Proper motion is second, that we approve the budget transfer in motion. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right. We go on to now to the action calendar, and as I understand it, let me get the right alphabet. The number is number nine. Is J or G? That's what I'm. It's J? Okay, so may I have a motion to accept the action calendar's entirety, all except for item J?
The champ?
All right. Proper motion is second, are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. Okay. Now, may I have a motion now to accept the change order to number six to the design contract for the Chatham County Multiple Agency Public Safety Facilities for additional design services related to the revised plan and specification for the future of this project? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the motion as stated.
Is it second? Proper motion is second, are you ready for the question now? At this particular point, Commissioner Farrell, and who else was that? All right, Commissioner Farrell. Where, where did Ms. Cooley go? Oh, oh, okay. It's going to be you? Okay, all right. All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the pulling, pulling this item off. There was some community concern and questions about it, so I'd like to take this opportunity for county staff to dive in a little deeper as to why there was another change order to this project, and the floor is yours.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This change order is for your design professional. This project began, or we began the contract with the consultant back in twenty eighteen. And we first put it out to bid and only received one bid. So it was really behooving on us to reject that bid, and then we went through a prequal and another I T B, which you had four bidders, and we rejected that.
Could you tell us why you rejected the four bids?
Well, the four bids, this commission has put an emphasis on M W B participation and made that important component. And we did find that bidders kind of struggled with that and being able to meet that goal. So we've put more of an emphasis on that this go-around. Right now, we've issued a prequal, and I can tell you, interest has definitely picked up. You went from one bidder to now ten G Cs submitted for this prequal. So, there's definitely a lot more interest in this project.
Does that usually?
That's in the, in the county's benefit to have as much interest.
Say, doesn't that normally benefit the county taxpayers in that?
Absolutely.
They get more competitive bids.
You're absolutely right.
Where one bid tends to take advantage in some respects of a county taxpayer?
Absolutely. The more competition, the better. So you've gone from one, and now the interest is ten. So that is wonderful. In this specific change order, the last bid, we issued five addendums, over two hundred questions came in from G Cs, and so this is allowing.
Could you explain for the public what a G C is?
A general contractor. That's who is going to do your construction. And there was over two hundred questions that were received and answered, and this change order is incorporating those into your plans and specifications.
So, so we're trying to pre-answer possible change orders and issues in.
Yes.
In the actual building phase?
Absolutely.
To try to.
Absolutely. Your addendums and those changes, you are trying to be preemptive so that you don't see change orders later. You're absolutely right. Yeah, sure.
So, this facility is probably one of the more complicated facilities that you're going to see in Chatham County, especially in technology. It's quite a bit more technologically advanced than even the courthouse that you're building now. So there is a lot of scrutiny, a lot of investigation into systems when it comes to the design. So, the two hundred questions that Ms. Maurer was mentioning really got down into some other eyes actually looking at the plans and specs, and really asking the questions, does this fit with that? Does this, does this go here? Is this the right size? So, we're able to go in there and actually finalize those plans and specs based on those questions, so that when we actually start construction, hopefully the changes will be minimal.
And just for the public's information, how storm-ready is this building going to be when it's completed?
This facility is actually going to be elevated outside of a category five storm surge zone, so there shouldn't be any flooding associated with it. It's also going to be built to a category five and EF four tornado. So, this is a survivable structure, one of, if not the most survivable structure in all of Chatham County, is what we are building here. So, our intent is to stay in this facility during a major hurricane and also significant tornado. It will have double backups, and in some cases, triple backups, so that we can live completely off the grid and operate completely off the grid for at least seventy-two hours.
And how many staff folks during a major emergency could spend the night there comfortably?
Sure. On a normal day-to-day basis, it is going to house the airport's public safety department, which is about twenty-five people. It'll house the SEMA offices, which is about fifteen, it'll house nine-one-one, which is a hundred and, a hundred and seven people. So you take two of those shifts, and we're talking anywhere up close to three hundred people that it could support.
So three hundred people could comfortably stay in this building?
Yes, sir.
Overnight?
Including sleeping arrangements.
Two or three nights in a row?
Yes, sir. Sleeping arrangements, food, shower facilities, it'll support about three hundred people.
That's pretty impressive.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Plus, when you add the command policy group in there, your numbers kind of go up into four hundred.
Can't, can't forget about the command policy group.
Right.
You'll have a place to shower.
They're the ones who have to stay here and make the decisions, right? And so, you could have as many as four hundred and fifty people in this building and in the safe area. And let me say this, and I want to put this in because there's been questions about it. The second round, when we had the four bidders, the reason, one of the main reasons they were rejected is because they broke our command, our procurement policy. And so, and that's when I warned, I said to the commissioners as well as myself, during this process, please do not let any general contractors entertain you. Don't go out to dinner with them, don't go to lunch with them, don't entertain them on the phone, because they give them directions as to who they should get in touch with, all right? Am I correct?
Correct.
And, and we ought to make them stay with them, and the violation of that policy caused us to kick the other four out the last time, is because they tried to reach out individually and personally to us commissioners, and we don't want to be a part of the procurement process so that somebody can say we swing the bid one way or the other. So we stay out of that by letting them still follow the rules, and we're going to be adhering to, and the manager has instructions from us, that all of those must stay within the rules. Anybody who was outside the rules have to go, all right, and not be included. And we so, since all that came up, and the commissioners wanted to make it clear today as to why we're here, adding, taking care of some of these problems in the design phase from the architect will not cost us millions of dollars in the construction phase.
Yes.
But that's one of the things that can happen and do happen often. We've already suffered through that with the, trying to get the courthouse up and going, all right? So, I get, we get everybody's questions, everybody's concerns, all right? We have a motion on the floor to accept. A second, please cast your votes. All right? Good. Thank you all. Appreciate it. We don't have any first readers. Let us go to the second reader, and there is, entertain a motion to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table.
Second. Proper motion is second, that the second reader for today be table, are you ready for the question? All right. Please cast your votes. Okay. With that, Mr. Manager, will you please, sir, get the concerns and get with staff so we can cover this by the time we bring it off the table again?
Yes, sir.
All right. Having said that, we add informational session. No information from the.
Yes, sir.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Could we get, could we get an update on our recreational facility? I'm really eager to, to see that moving, project moving along.
Yes, sir, we'll get you an update on that. We are currently in the design phase, trying to solicit an architect to get that designed for us, so we'll, we'll get you an update on that.
All right. So, do we have a timeline on, on the, on that particular piece of the puzzle?
I'm going to get with the purchasing staff, and we'll get you a timeline.
All right, thank you.
Let me, let me say now, one of the first timelines that we're going to be dealing with is that we're going to have to find out where it is, the money is, all right? So that's going to come before you. While they're doing design, all right, while they're working on that, we've got to work out a trail for the money, all right? The money is to do this. We have some monies in place that come, came out of Splosh Seven, am I correct? Okay. I just want to check, make sure, I knew that already, but I want to make sure that people know my facts. We have things that are in there that cause us to go through the design phase, but we've got to find the avenue where the money is going to come from to build it, okay? So that's going to be, while they're doing that, the manager will have group, small group sessions, and then from small group sessions, we come to a larger group session where we talk about where the finances are for it, okay? So those are, that's where it is right now, and it's in, and he'll get you that information as soon as possible. Having said that, we do have a need to have executive session, all right? May I have a motion to do so?
So move personnel.
Right. Personnel, land acquisition, personnel, and appointment. Okay. Litigation, all right? Got it all. I heard there's some moves, is that a second?
Second.
Proper motion is second, that we recess into the executive session. Are you ready for the question? Please cast your votes. All right. We broke the record.
Billy Harry be proud of it.
That's because we got new people on the board.
We were, to my, to my youth commissioners, we were short, sweetened, to the point today. All right, so have a great day at school for the rest of the day, all right? God bless you, and thank you for being here.
It's cold and flu season, and your best defense against the flu is to be vaccinated. But keeping colds at bay isn't always as easy. Dr. Michael Benninger treats patients at Cleveland Clinic. He says there are ways to decrease your chances of catching a cold.
There are preventative things that clearly have been shown in multiple studies that make a difference. Healthy living, adequate rest, hand washing, and lastly is exercise.
Dr. Benninger says studies have shown people who exercise routinely get fewer colds. Washing your hands frequently also helps kill any virus or bacteria you may pick up. You should also avoid touching your mouth or eyes with your hands as much as possible. A healthy diet will provide you with all of the vitamins.